I think we can call the meeting to order. And let's take a roll call just to make sure we have everyone here. Just spoke with Jill. Jim is here. Commissioner Brennholdt.
I'm here.
Granlund.
Here.
Greggert. Commissioner Greggert. Commissioner Wolfgram.
Here.
And Commissioner Obaid.
Here.
And Commissioner Proznick, are you here?
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is a work session. Our second work session on the midterm review of the comprehensive plan. And our first agenda item is follow-up on questions and comments from October 19th, 2020 work session. Mr. Allen.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I hope everybody can hear me okay.
Yes.
Sorry I can't be there in person this evening, but appreciate Ryan and Ned, who I sent our presence in the room. So they'll be there to help as well. So thank you to them for getting things set up here for tonight. And again, we have a brief amount of time to walk through. We have four items, but obviously they can all have quite a bit of discussion. But the first one, again, just are there any questions and comments from the session, work session last time, which was October 19th? There is some meeting notes provided in your packet. Just really just a quick summary just to remind everyone where we were at that moment. Just looking for any kind of feedback from the last meeting before we get into the other items. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Allen before he gets started? Okay, I see none.
That makes things go a little bit quicker. Anticipated moving to item number two by my Mr. Chair. Review of the input from boards and commissions. This is a new spreadsheet. Don't want to overwhelm you too many spreadsheets. It doesn't want to be stand chart, have a timeline approach. Let Mr. Petrie scan down there. Thank you. And what we tried to do here was just show the each of the different chapters. So those are the numbers that you see there. Item number two. Item number one is more of a kind of intro item. Again, it doesn't necessarily numerically match up with the planning station program at the end of the comprehensive plan. So just tried to emphasize the actual names of the different chapters, which are technically called plans within the comprehensive plan. So what we did was took your direction, advice, recommendation to bring relevant pieces of the comprehensive plan to the various boards and commissions and committees throughout the city. And so what we tried to do here is show a bit of a timeline of what that looks like. And then just again, essentially identify by chapter which group would be the most pertinent to review each of these. So hopefully you can follow along without too much introduction. You can see there, this was a snapshot taken last Friday. So if you see the date and kind of the red indicator there, indicator bar, that shows the difference. That shows the date that this was made or last edited, which is this past Friday. So with that, we're just trying to show, again, trying to get up to that next proposed work session, which would be the Monday, December 14th date. So those purple bars are showing there. Trying to show as well the individual dates where it says start. Those would be the dates where we anticipate bringing these before those different boards and commissions. So without just reading what you see here on the blight or overhead or in your paperwork. I just wanted to see if you had any questions or comments on that. I think one of those in particular would be, you can see some of these are more strictly aimed at the planning commission. For example, if you look at item number eight, the urban design plan, or item number nine, again, the neighborhoods and districts plan, then bouncing back up, which is the next agenda item really, looking at chapter two, which is the land use and growth management plan. So did get some initial feedback from Commissioner Wolfgram earlier today with a good observation that those were the three that were more strictly aimed at the planning commission. At the very least, for lack of any other board or commission, that would be most pertinent. So for staff, that would be another question. One would be any questions or comments or feedback initially just looking at it? And then number two would be, do you feel like chapters two, eight, and nine would be appropriate to more kind of walk through page by page with the planning commission at a work session or as a discussion item at a regular meeting? Or simply just to solicit feedback and we can kind of summarize it at a committee meeting? So that's where I wanted to leave this item on your agenda. One, just again, initial feedback. Then two, do you feel those, those three would be appropriate for you? And are we missing really anything else for the other chapters? With that, turn it back over to Chair Larson and the rest of the commission.
Okay. Let's start with Commissioner Wolfgram, who just raised her hand.
Thank you, Chairperson Larson. I trust that this is a little more informal and I can ask Mr. Allen some follow-ups. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. So I would, I do believe that those three chapters are appropriate and I absolutely would vote for a session, a work session where we're going page by page. One of my overall concerns about this entire process that I've shared with you is that even though it's a midterm review, five years can influence the entire trajectory of a city. And I'm very concerned that we aren't putting enough time into the process. I completely understand the lack of resources and everybody's time, but I just wanted to go on the record that that's a concern of mine. And whenever we could put more time into it, I would vote to do that. My other, my other question is that there are a number of chapters, including chapter 10, the housing chapter, that have a lot of crossover issues into other chapters. And so for instance, the housing chapter, you know, the downtown plan, the economic development plan, urban design plan, the neighborhoods and districts, land use and growth, and arguably the transportation plan, they all have crossover housing issues. And again, other chapters have crossover issues as well. And so I was concerned about how we are going to address that. You know, will there be a representative from the appropriate board or commission that would sit in with the other board or commission that's reviewing a chapter or at least emailing their feedback to that body to make sure that we're addressing both crossover issues? And then I have just one other question after getting some feedback, Mr. Allen. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Chairperson Larson, and observations. And I think I am referring to our agenda. We can talk more specifically regarding public engagement, but certainly have some thoughts on that as well. In terms of each of these boards and commissions that we're seeing here, intent is to present these somewhat formally as much as possible to each of those groups that they've noted and then request their feedback either at that meeting as a discussion item or as a follow-up. So the intent is to try to get enough feedback before your next scheduled work session on December 14th from all these different boards and commissions. So the, hopefully, we would see that in the form of something either written comments or at least recording through the minutes of their meeting, getting some feedback specifically at that meeting. So hopefully that kind of answers the question in terms of this kind of board and commission input from kind of, again, we can talk a little more about that in a moment, about kind of outside the walls of City Hall, so to speak, and making sure we're engaging other groups. That's certainly something you want to be cognizant of too and trying to overcome what seems to be new obstacles every day in terms of either the pandemic or, you know, staff capacity and also again, just all the usual things such as weather and holidays and such. So a lot of things we need to work through to see what would be the best way to get engagement from outside City Hall. And we can talk about that here in number four. And again, back to the comment about kind of overlapping and crossover with the different plans. Again, we would certainly want to give some guidance and feedback here on these different chapters. Trying to exactly kind of play that balance between, you know, a very robust and thorough rewriting like we would do every 10 years versus more of a midterm kind of check and review of just a more, I think, cursory, but you know, less in-depth. But again, also being cognizant of the fact that exactly that, a lot can change in five years and where are we going in the next five years is really a lot of what we're trying to set up as well. So we're hoping to get enough feedback that can play into these specific chapters and those specific goals in the tables in chapter 15, the planning application program. But absolutely, and I can defer to Ryan or Ned too. I know Ned was involved with the 2015 cap plan. Again, each of these do somewhat stand on their own, but certainly there are overlapping issues, you know, between them as well. I'll let you say, for example, you have housing preference. The housing opportunities commission is taking on reviewing chapter 10. Now again, they're not the only ones reviewing chapter 10. Plan commission is reviewing that. Staff is reviewing that. And understandably so, housing is, does have, you know, there's at least a flavor of that in a lot of the other chapters as well. So it's not an exclusive approach. It's simply trying to be a focused approach to try to get more specific kind of expert analysis and feedback on those individual chapters. Again, with perhaps it needs to be more clear from staff that that doesn't mean they're not allowed to look at the other chapters or make some other relevant input based on their perspective as that commission member in these other chapters. So I've made a start kind of answering a little bit still too fuzzy, but I guess trying to be focused on the review and the analysis, but not being exclusive in it. So again, try to find that balance as best we can without turning it into a full rewrite of the entire plan.
I very much appreciate that. And just one last clarification then, since the plan commission is not officially reviewing chapter 10, of course the housing opportunities commission is. If I or anyone else has a recommendation for a chapter that we are not, the plan commission is not formally reviewing, when is that that we would give that recommendation?
That's a great point. And absolutely, that's the intent is to get feedback wherever it seems necessary and not to be too, too much of tunnel vision in those different chapters. But yes, if you're looking for something outside of, you know, talk about these three different chapters, those three different chapters exactly, you know, chapters two, eight, and nine, that's kind of focused approach. And we'll get into a bit of chapter two here in a moment. But certainly email, phone calls between now and the next work session. But if we're trying to keep on a track with, trying to match it up with the boards and commissions' work plans at the beginning of next year, I think by probably your first meeting in January would be ideal. Or it'd be, I would say ideal would be actually December 14th. It'd be great to have any specific comments or questions you have, edits, suggestions, critiques, other analysis by your work session on the 14th. So we can certainly build that agenda here as well under item number four in terms of reviewing next best. I don't want to say that's the best and only answer is to have everything done by then in terms of, you know, additional response and feedback. For example, if you have comments and critiques of chapter 10, anytime is great. It'd be great to have as much of that summarized from each of the individual planning commission members at your next work session if possible.
Thank you so much. That clarifies a lot for me. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Christopherson wanted to have a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate these comments about public input. And I just want to briefly say that over these work sessions, I've come to understand more clearly that shift between creating new and just focusing based on our current progress. And all of this is in front of the professional performance and activities of the city staff. So I see between now and the rewriting of the plan, we have so many opportunities to involve interested parties, professionals, particular minority groups that we see having stake but having no voice. But I don't think we have to bend the plan to that, but we have to bring those people to the table because we see it as being important. But so I really appreciate the opportunity to understand the process more clearly. And I feel really empowered to bring this update in front of the neighborhood associations and other groups that really don't understand the breadth of the planning process. So this has been really helpful to me. And my last comment would be, I don't know if it's like legal, illegal for us as commissioners to have unofficial work sessions where we could read along with a peer and get their understanding and formulate our questions a little more clearly. Is that permissible?
Mr. Allen, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but would it require, so obviously the question gets to the point of whether or not we can meet without official notice, which we cannot. So if there's a walking quorum, and I think Councilmember Christopherson, you've gotten some information on that too. So we want to be careful of that. But one member meeting with another member to discuss a chapter, I think, does not violate the open meetings law. Am I right, Mr. Allen?
Yes, right. I would agree with, I would agree with Chairperson Larson on that. Correct. Two members should be allowable. Any more than that would be questionable.
Thank you. My only other inquiry then would be, is it possible for us to notice a study session that did not include staff so that we didn't need to take up more of your time?
So that you would want more than two members?
Well, I mean, it could be publicly noticed so that whoever was available could come, but it wouldn't require that it was a staffed planning commission meeting.
Yeah, I would be careful about that. Maybe you could, maybe you could check with the city attorney's office later.
Thank you.
We can certainly ask about that as well. I can confidently say that if you are having a publicly noticed work session and staff is not required to be there, you will have at least one staff member attending as a member of the public.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
So on the, I feel like we need to sort of resolve this question of whether we want to go through these three chapters a page at a time or leave it up to the members to bring questions at a meeting. I'd like to solicit more, some more feedback from members on that issue. Okay. I'll take that as a no preference. Mr. Allen, do you think it would, Jeremy, Commissioner Greggert?
Thank you, Chairperson Larson. I guess I don't have a big preference on that, but I do have some other thoughts about this, this matrix that we're seeing here, if this is an appropriate time.
Let me finish my question for Mr. Allen quick first, if you don't mind. Mr. Allen, do you think that if we went through these page by page, it would require a meeting for each chapter?
Not necessarily. I believe, again, I may defer to, for example, as you see here, we have some, I guess all three of us are identifying one of these chapters. So for example, Ryan's going to talk through, you know, part of chapter two, but not necessarily page by page. Again, kind of leaning back towards that review versus rewrite and just really wanting to focus on a few key items within that, which is where it's maybe kind of a hybrid approach where, you know, staff, for example, chapter two here is going to highlight, for example, the future landing or planned land use plan. We have some suggested changes and comments or critiques to that, but we're not necessarily looking to go page by page. So we could still, you know, solicit feedback and input on that. But it would be, again, homework essentially for the planning commission members to come prepared to discuss that. Chapters eight and nine, I would probably say very similarly. So I don't know if we could really put all three of them together. We could. I mean, we could do anything we put our minds to, I think, with this. But I think we could, again, get the discussion started here tonight with chapter two, come back on the 14th with, you know, two, eight, and nine. I would recommend and request that we look to meet perhaps starting earlier. If possible, to give us, you know, maybe a good half hour for each chapter. I don't know, Ned or Ryan have any other thoughts on that, but it's certainly doable.
So did I hear you say you want to do chapter two tonight? Because that's not on our agenda.
Sure. No, I know you're saying, yeah, number three talks about update and discussion on planning station program assessment.
Oh, okay.
We can pull up that matrix, but we were going to just introduce chapter two as a part of that discussion and update. And Ryan has a few, you know, kind of guiding comments and edits to kind of share for that initial conversation. But exactly then, leading into December 14th, we could look at two, eight, and nine. We could look at all three chapters. And again, you know, fashioned around staff presenting some of, again, the items in that assessment table that we've provided before already, we can pull it up if need be. But you can focus on chapter 15, look at those tables with the goals, and that's where we can focus our conversation. But if there are other questions, you know, various pages that we don't necessarily hit through that, that would be an opportunity to have that conversation as well. But then it would be incumbent upon the commission to read through all three of those chapters, again, focused on the tables and chapter 15 at the end, and then come with, you know, questions and critiques and edits and such. And then we can have a, you know, staff can set up each of those chapters for that dialogue. Focus maybe half hour in each one and then just see where we need to go from there. But I guess as a whole, that's essentially what we've been envisioning during this process as well, is to look at it in that kind of condensed format, but still have, you know, a month in between each work session so you have enough time to do some homework and review, and then you also have time to ask questions and solicit feedback from staff. Or as Commissioner Christopherson mentioned, you know, I guess buddy up with somebody and go through it as well as an opportunity that way.
Yeah, I think, I think with the limitations we have right now with our meetings, it's probably best if we rely on our commissioners to do some homework and come ready to discuss the parts of those chapters that they think are important. Commissioner Greggert?
Thank you, Chairperson Larson. Yeah, I agree with that, you know, after thinking a bit more and learning more about what staff have in mind here. Yeah, I'm certainly willing to read those chapters and compare them to that implementation chapter. I guess I had some comments about this, this matrix thing. So just a couple thoughts on this. I really like, I really like it, for one. I was thinking perhaps the transit commission could review the transportation plan. That would probably be on the 16th of December. But I see that transit division does, like the staff essentially, but I think it'd be good if the commission side will be just kind of wrapping up our transit development plan work. And I think it'll be, be interesting for the commission to see how that fits in with a larger transportation plan. Another thing that came to mind looking at this, I see that redevelopment authority is listed under economic development plan, which is obviously relevant, but it also seems like it might make sense to have them review a couple of the other plans. And this is really kind of up to what staff I think would be appropriate, but just some of the ideas, one of them is historic and cultural resources, because sometimes that's kind of a tricky subject with redevelopment. And then also the downtown plan and the urban design plan. So maybe not all of those, but maybe think about some others that they could review because it seems like economic development is maybe a little bit too narrow of a, of a focus given how, I think there's a lot of other great chapters in here. I guess, you know, one of the reasons why I like the idea of having these go to commissions and committees is it just, if nothing else, it reminds them that the comprehensive plan exists and that there's relevant chapters that they can constantly go back to or use to get ideas for things they can work on. that they can constantly go back to or use to get ideas for things they can work on. So I don't necessarily, you know, expect like a huge amount of, you know, feedback necessarily or like tons of ideas for changes. But it just seems like it's a great opportunity to, to, to remind our boards and committees and commissions that there's this plan out here that, that can really help them with their work. So, um, the other thing I'll say is the neighborhoods and districts plan. I think Councilmember Christoffersen had mentioned, uh, neighborhood associations and, you know, how that could be something that, you know, we could all approach neighborhood associations about. Or we could find maybe a comprehensive way to do that. I know that the Neighborhood Association Summit is this Friday. And, and Mr. Noel will be presenting a bit about how to connect neighborhoods and city planning together. So it can maybe be a relevance there. But, um, this makes me think about our neighborhood associations and that neighborhood plan, even though that's kind of our newest chapter that I think had a lot of input already. But, so yeah, that's just kind of where I'm at in thinking through this document. So thank you.
Okay. Um, any other comments on the overview of input from boards and commissions or this matrix that we're looking at? And then we'll move on to number three, which is an update and discussion of plan, plan implementation program assessment. Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is where I could turn over to Brian to talk about, uh, again, just to get the conversation started with, uh, chapter two, but really focused on that planned land use map and some reports we had on that. Before we kind of get too far down the line with, um, you know, looking at some edits and updates to that. And again, this may be a little bit of a precursor to, uh, you know, how we can look at, um, all three of those chapters, perhaps at your next work session. So with that, I'll turn over to, to Peter.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This map may look familiar to you. It's the planned land use map. Uh, we've been calling that for some time, uh, in the community in the comprehensive plan, under the land use chapter number two. This is the guide that we use for new development, redevelopment, for the neighborhoods, core areas, even the growth areas, as I circled a few on the screen. Uh, this area, this, this is more of a parcel-based comprehensive review. And talking with staff and this commission, um, we would prefer more of a broad or flexible review in the future. So staff is proposing to rename it to the future land use map instead of planned land use map, to make one change. And then also looking at areas within the community and potentially outside the community that would be annexed in the future to allow for a little more flexibility, to allow for a middle, a little more creative redevelopment or new development uh, within the community. Uh, since I've been on board, I've been here almost six years now, we've had two, um, planned land use map amendments. The first one on the screen is down on the Highway thirty-seven corridor, which was annexed, the little red school, which most people are familiar with, uh, Eau Claire schools. Uh, vacated that building and then sold it, um, on the future land use map for, or the planned land use map. And the comprehensive plan noted as a public facility, which is very detailed facility. Um, that does not allow for much flexibility for rehabbing or reusing of that vacant school. So we had to amend the comprehensive plan, planned land use map, for a commercial entity, which is along the commercial corridor, uh, Highway thirty-seven is a, a state highway. That's one of the examples. And then I'll switch over showing the north side of town. And in particular, this dot right here, which some of your commission members were a member, a part of as well. That was for the Hope Gospel Women's Shelter. Now that, they took over, um, an assisted living memory care facility. Uh, they do more of a programming and commercial type business. So they had to amend the comp plan from medium to high density residential to commercial. And that was about three or four years ago then. I have highlighted some other circles within the map that staff believes would be more appropriate for a little more flexibility, a little more, uh, redevelopment or new development. In particular, uh, this large circle right here, which is north of the raft. Uh, the raft was located right here, temporary city hall for about a year and a half. Uh, after being on that site for a year and a half and walking this area during lunchtime, I can tell you this entire area west of, uh, Jeffers Road and Jeffers Ballpark is here on the map. The west location of that, all the way almost to where the woods start, um, that will not be industrial land. It's just not suited for industrial. It's rolling hills. I don't know if any of the members have been out there on county line road. So this would be south of county line road, west of the ball fields out there on Jeffers Road, uh, south of county line road. It just doesn't make much sense for industrial, in my opinion. Uh, dealing with Gateway Industrial Park, they are on board with that now. So that would be a significant change, in my opinion, to this map. Uh, that would allow for more residential within that area, potentially even workforce housing uh, next to industrial area. Um, and then also allowing for more density along the county line road and then transitioning into lower density as you head away from the road. Uh, I would point out too, in the core neighborhoods, this is really parcel-based. Uh, in particular, along Third Avenue or Third Street, on the west side, uh, there is a nodes of commercial development, which is pretty popular within the core neighborhoods. Uh, usually that node incorporates a cafe, restaurant, uh, even your local taverns or neighborhood services type businesses. Uh, Burt Street would be another good example where there is nodes of older commercial within, uh, established neighborhoods that would allow for redevelopment or even new development along that corridor. So we're not looking for huge changes. I'll go back to the south side of town. There is a few, in particular in Sky Park on the corner of, uh, Hamilton. Uh, Hamilton, I think that's Stein, um, that would allow for a little more flexibility within that industrial. I would reiterate to the commission that any commercial land inside of the community, uh, according to this map and in the comprehensive plan and going forward, commercial land would be redeveloped potentially and rezoned to multifamily. We have seen that numerous times now. The most recent one on the map was right here, which is on the intersection of Interstate ninety-four and Highway ninety-three, west of the Fleet Farm. And that's going to go for, uh, assisted living memory care facility, which this commission and the city council agreed that that should be, uh, allowed to be a more residential nature, but fitting within the neighborhood of that development. So that would be another example where that commercial, the red area on this map, does allow for areas to be redeveloped or even new developed into, uh, multifamily. So that was one of the chapters that I had, chapter two. We, uh, Mr. Allen noted that maybe next time we would talk a little more in depth and actually go page by page potentially, or do a mass summary. Uh, this is one of the changes that, um, I'm passionate about, about land uses and redevelopment, new development, revitalization, especially within areas that have, have seen new development, but have not seen new development or any redevelopment. Uh, the Kennedy District would be another example of that area, um, going forward. So just allowing for a little more flexibility within the future land use map for a guide for this commission and the city council to review and, and members of the public and developers. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, this evening.
All right, good. Commissioner Granland.
The, the, it, it occurred to me that one of the issues that came up in the last few years that the, the, that the city has addressed has been the, the downzoning of certain areas where a previous, a previous attempt at, at a structured zone system turned out to be, uh, inappropriate. There was a, the, the ring system that was developed around the, the urban core where each ring was a, was another level higher or lower of, um, residential intensity. Um, however, that was, I think that was overly strict in its application when it was first, uh, first applied. I think that we're, it would be useful in these cases to have a, um, like a, a, a module of, of planned, uh, node system. Um, when, when we have these various areas of commercial and then surrounding the commercial, we have, you know, residential and we have a park and we have public or whatever. Um, if there was a, um, essentially a small model insert that, that might be, um, a swap, swapped in and out. You know, for the, for the large circle you've got up on that northwest side, for instance, there's, if I, maybe there's a, an, a, a useful, uh, insert of a couple of storefronts as well as the, as a park, as well as the residential you were talking about because it's too hilly. Um, maybe there's a little bit of a, you know, an X or a, or a T shaped something that could be, uh, held off to the side of the map. And so, oh, well, in, in these areas where we don't have anything yet, um, we could, we could choose one of these models to, 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 to substitute or to, to lay into the plan without putting it in the middle of the plan yet. But to have a, have an available module of, here's some organizational clusters. Um, again, it's like, oh, well, here's, you know, what if, what if we had, you know, a bunch of little shops up and down Highway T or whatever. Um, and from those you get little community walkways and, um, now, just as a, for instance, that there would be the old model of Burt Street or Water Street with, you know, higher levels of commerce with secondary residences above and that kind of thing. Um, as a, as an application to some of these areas. I think it would be, I say, we have an overall plan that most of it won't change. But where it might change, we might want to have, oh, a couple of options to pick from. What, what's a good transition from, you know, an X shaped piece to a more linear stretch or whatever it is that, that might be the different model? I think that might be a, a helpful approach to rather than just renaming it and then leaving things vague. The idea of planning is to, is to do our best right now to predict what those, the next pieces are. And if we, if we fail to predict it correctly, we, there are options for zoning it differently. We've made exemptions to zoning, you know, several times this year. And we've been asked for another exemption or transfer of zoning, uh, later this evening. Um, it's not a bad idea to, to guess once and then change your mind.
Okay. Any, uh, response to that, Mr. Petrie?
Oh, excellent comment. I think that, uh, that makes sense. I guess, right now, if we use this as a guide, that area would have to stay industrial, which highly unlikely that's going to occur. That's been, so Gateway Board purchased that, which is an entity of the city, exonerating in the county. Uh, my understanding, we purchased that over thirty years ago. Highly unlikely it's going to be industrial, in my opinion, uh, after walking. And the amount of dirt work it would take, it just economically wouldn't make any sense. Um, but I also understand what, um, Mr. Granland's saying. Having a little more long-term flexibility, uh, I think that is the key. Uh, not only with this, but also any development that would occur in that area. So that, since that is one of the larger lands that the city has that is vacant currently and will remain vacant until later.
All right. Mr. Gregor.
Thank you, Chair Larson. Um, and I guess to Mr. Granland's point, I mean, just to respond to that a little bit myself too, I guess. I do see the orange that we have on the map for mixed use and it starts to go along those lines. Um, in terms of, you know, having spaces that are a bit more flexible. Um, but I guess, uh, you know, some of my broader comments about this, um, this map, um, I guess I, I, I see like tons of different areas that have changed and, um, you know, trying to, trying to be as forward-looking as possible. I guess I'd be interested in finding ways for us to identify more parkland, um, including maybe some larger areas to preserve that we think have really amazing natural qualities already. Um, as, in addition to like some more neighborhood parks. I guess one of the, the things that I wanted to point out is we recently, maybe without consulting this document very much, um, you know, we approved housing at the northeast corner of Gateway and, uh, East Hamilton. And I think that, that's, that there's, you know, there's some green space, like a park at that location under this map. And I imagine that was just kind of put there as like, hey, we should have a neighborhood park somewhere in this area. Um, but if you look at it very specifically, we, we just approved high density housing at that location. There is however, a, a parcel that's twice as large just to the south. It's kind of shaped like a pie that only has one housing unit on it. And I've, I've even, you know, discussed with staff, like, hey, like, what if we could approach the owner about that becoming a park someday, you know? So I guess I'd, I bring that up because I think there's a lot of different opportunities on this map to identify more park locations, including some really large ones, uh, to protect some natural areas and, and provide, you know, just more amenities for the public. So I guess my question would be like, how do we, how do we go about doing that? You know, in the matter of the next month or two when we, when we're reviewing this, uh, to really kind of focus on parks. I know we have, you know, a Parks and Open Spaces plan, but that's really primarily for areas that are already within the city. But this, this map is, has a lot of areas outside the city. Um, so yeah, I guess I just wanted some feedback on, on some of the aspiration that's starting to come across my mind about, you know, about, you know, having more park space in the, in the long-term future.
Yeah, excellent question, uh, Mr. Gregor. Um, I'm personally taking this to the waterway and parks commission in December. And that might be, I think you just raised a great question for them to think about prior to the meeting and that maybe have a discussion about. Um, in particular, the one you're mentioning on Hamilton, that was actually zone multifamily. I think the map might have been a terror. I believe you're referring to the south of that parcel would actually make more sense as a, as a park, in my opinion. But that would be an excellent question, um, to bring up to the waterway and parks commission. I'll be meeting with them in December fourth, I think it is. Um, to maybe identify some areas outside of the community that are not currently, um, annexed. And then propose maybe some open space parkland that has unique characteristics. Um, for example, like the Northwest Community Park. Uh, that was one of the areas that we identified years ago that that would be a park. Um, I think preserving those areas, uh, in open space makes a lot of sense. And I'll also bring that question, uh, to that commission.
Great. And I guess as a follow-up to that, you know, I look at places like Mount Washington, which recently sold to, to this, to the ski, um, the Flying Eagle Ski Club. So should that be, should that little green be like eliminated from this? Or what, what do you recommend doing in that case? To the southeast of there?
Yeah, excellent question. I was on the wrong green area. That area should remain open space. The reason being is because that is a unique area in the community, you know, you're right off of downtown to the west. Either the ski club should maintain it as open space and/or the city in the future takes that back and continues to remain that open space. I don't think that it should ever be developed into, for example, housing or, or whatever it would be, that should remain open space. I think clarifying the green area and out here, that's a county park, but that should all remain either parkland and/or open space land.
So just as a follow-up to that, so if it's green, it could technically be private land, but designated for preservation? Seems like there might be, might need to be some agreements to go along with that somehow, but...
Yeah, excellent question. I would say, yeah, green should be open space or parkland, but you're right, agreement makes the property owner privately go. Okay, any other comments or questions about Chapter Two? Mr. Gregor, you ran off again there.
Yeah, just another thing on the map, if that's all right, on this, the southern version. I guess my question is about Altoona. I, I know that they're planning to, to keep kind of trudging east, I guess you could say, you know, because they don't want to necessarily get landlocked, locked is my understanding, by the city of Eau Claire, so, I mean, this map doesn't necessarily imply that the city of Eau Claire is going to start going into that area just east of Altoona, does it? Or, because I think actually, if we double-check the boundaries of Altoona, it might actually already be getting close to Double A over there. I'm just kind of wondering about the, about how our plan should, should be, maybe we should be in the touch with the city of Altoona about what would be agreeable in this regard?
Excellent question. There is actually, in Chapter Two, there was a, a reference to work with the city of Altoona to come up with a boundary agreement, and you are correct, they have asked more land in this area, south of 12, west of Double I, or Double A, pardon me. They are not interested in agreement with the city of Eau Claire at this time. I was involved with some meetings with, got a predecessor, Mr. Darryl Plunkett, and at that time Altoona was not interested. They prefer to hold their land and any land they can get at it. They are a smaller community that is, you're correct, they're almost landlocked. They can't go north, they can't go west, they can barely go south. The only direction they can go is east, and at that time, they were not interested. This line that I'm, where it shows the Future Land Use Map is the steward service area line for the community, so that's with the Comprehensive Plan, the town agreements, and then also shown on our Future Land Use Map, Plan Land Use Map. That area potentially would be suited for annexation in the future, but to reiterate that the city of Altoona was not interested in any kind of agreement with the city of Eau Claire, even though the city of Eau Claire does provide the sewer, to say the least.
If I could add on that real quickly, thanks, Ryan. Just wanted to note that, speaking with their city planner in Altoona, they are looking at doing their full Comprehensive Plan update next year, so we can certainly coordinate and work with them as they work on their comprehensive plan as well during the year next year.
Okay. All right. We got started late, so we've got a couple more minutes, I guess. Is there any other, any other input on Chapter Two? All right. So in review of next steps and public engagement options, I was anxious, we talked about December 14th, we're going to discuss Chapters Two, Eight, and Nine. And in the meantime, commissioners are welcome to and encouraged to submit questions or issues they would like to discuss with staff through email or phone calls, I suppose. And then we also had a discussion about, is permissible for members to meet one-on-one, as long as they're careful not to, you know, turn into a walking forum, whether they meet with another member and so on, but if you'd like to get together one-on-one and talk about these chapters, you're welcome to do that in the meantime, and... Did I just say anything, Mr. Allen?
No, that's great. That's very helpful, Mr. Chair. Just with regard to the public engagement option, if there's any initial or additional, I should say additional, comment or feedback at this point, that'd be helpful in just speaking with staff that are in the room there. When Ryan, Ned, and I were talking about this as well, and again, we've been talking about this for, for quite a while, admittedly, in terms of processes and all the obstacles that we've been faced to, to make it the best public engagement process possible, understanding, the understanding of, you know, Commissioner Wolfram even mentioned, you know, the, how the guardrails that are in place with a review versus a full revision update. All that to say, you know, there are a lot of different options to consider. We don't know if they have to decide on those here in the next two minutes or so, but if there's any feedback and suggestions on that, we'd be happy to, to hear that, and then perhaps come back at the, the next work session with, you know, have a top five list or something like that to talk about how we want to present this more broadly. You know, we could certainly do it like we're doing it here, where we take, you know, a kind of a range of chapters, you know, Chapters One through Four or something like that, and we present them in a, a public WebEx meeting and invite strategically, invite different groups to attend that and have a conversation. You know, that's an option that, that we've talked about. You can do that in kind of groups of chapters, or by topic, can do it by topic as well. You know, a lot of different options to look at, but we certainly don't want to be, we don't want to exclude that opportunity for some input. We certainly don't want to wait till, you know, just a public comment period and a regular planning division meeting in January, and then that's it, and, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace. So want to have some opportunity for some conversation. Again, I'll let this to set up if there's any immediate input on that right now, happy to take it, otherwise between now and December, I'll look to hear back from you as well and have some decisions moving forward at your December 14th meeting. I'll close with, yes, we are still looking at, you know, a website on, or webpage, I should say, on the Planning Division website, repository for a lot of information, things like that. So, you know, we're still looking at kind of a web presence and, you know, social media presence and have a standard kind of online options that we've talked about already. So that is in the works.
Okay, and, well, we have a few minutes' time at the next meeting to give a summary of, so feedback from the other boards and commissions that are reviewing other chapters?
That, that's a great, yep, that's a great point as well. We can include that as part of your meet, your work session next month.
Great. Any additional comments from the commission? See, then we'll adjourn the work session, and we will, we could meet at seven o'clock for our regular sessions.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org.